All right, let's rise with my pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought it was God calling home. Fellow board members, cabinet, everyone else that's here, welcome, welcome, welcome. We're getting close to the beginning of the school. All right, Heather Shaker, would you please do attendance?
I will. President Natalie.
Here.
Vice President Delisandro.
Here.
Senator Shaker, here. Presser Bailey.
Here.
Trusty Rippon.
Here.
Trusty Foster.
Here.
Trusty Hancer, present.
All present. Awesome, great job. Any changes to the board agenda? Consent agenda for the minutes for July 23rd. Do I have a motion? Please, Heather.
Move to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Is there support? Chad, support? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oxford High School Seal of Bili literacy Student Recognition.
Students are coming in clear, they're being lined up. So I'll give you just a second delay while they arrive. These students are graduates from May, so they're seniors. Many of them, as we were talking on the way, you guys been lining on them. Come on in, guys. And I think we'll have them face the camera, actually. And this will be the last time they line up, because the previous time was at commencement, when they walked across the stage. And so we have Beth Devlin. She took the IB assessment, and I'll explain what that means in a second, and what she scored. We have Andrew Romano. We have Kevin Vince. We are, see, Mr. Brady, we have Rowan Edmonds. And we have Lakon Palmeros. And so they're on their way off to college here, getting ready soon. The Seal of Bili Literacy is an award students can earn if they are proficient in at least two languages as defined by the state of Michigan. And so as graduates, they've earned the four credits in English Language Arts. And as a second requirement, they've been proficient on either an AP Spanish exam, an IB Spanish exam, or an AP or IB Chinese exam. And so to get a four out of five on an AP exam is really, really hard to do. It's a difficult test. They're all difficult. I'd have to say that world language tests are perhaps the most difficult. And then on the IB assessment, you have to get a four out of seven as well. Incredibly difficult to land. And so to no surprise, the students standing up here, many of them, actually all of them, we've recognized in the spring as some of our outstanding academic students, back one more time, lining up for the last time here to get their recognition for the Seal of Bili Literacy. So they excel at everything, but above all things, the Seal of Bili Literacy is very, very difficult to earn. A third way to earn that seal is to pass the STAM test, another proficiency test in the world languages, spanning across many different languages that you could take, of course, after high school. We have Chinese, we have American Sign Language, and we have Spanish. The state defines it as, "The seal has been created to encourage students to study world languages and embrace their native and heritage languages." The seal will provide employers with a way to identify individuals with strong language and bili literacy skills. The seal may serve as an additional tool for colleges and universities to recognize applicants' language abilities for admission and placements. So above all things, it's something students can take with them, with their diploma. It's an actual seal that will go on the diploma, and that's a credential that can help them get into colleges, which they didn't necessarily need all that help, but can help them beyond college as a proficient in more than one language, which is a really marketable skill to have, regardless of what profession they're going to go into, which I'm sure they'll all be very, very successful. So I think we'll give them one big and final round of applause.
Great job.
Great job, great job, congratulations. Curriculum and instruction, OVA curriculum. Want us to go right to the motion?
Yeah, let's go right to the motion at this point.
Would someone like to, Dan?
Move to approve new curriculum.
Bring your readers.
My readers.
Strike that, Dan's not reading. Heather?
Move to approve new curriculum. A CILIS, is that how it's pronounced? STEM Accelerate Veterinary Science and Hybrid Updates for OVA for the 2019-2020 school years presented.
Is there support?
I can support.
Dan, support, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Improvisational curriculum presentation, Debbie Brown.
This is Brown will be presenting on a new curriculum that be offered at the high school tonight.
See, Heather and I were just working on it. I had no problem with it. It was good. It was great. Great setup.
All right, welcome to Communication as Improv. Let me go over a little bit of the why. Companies and colleges are saying that our students are losing their communication soft skills, which are things such as body language, eye contact, basic communication skills, how to have empathy for each other, how to relate to each other, and simply how to talk to each other. So when we look at communication as improv, the idea is that improv is actually what we do it daily. You enter any conversation, and you don't know what the person's going to say. You don't know how things you're saying are going to be received. So everything we do has a bit of improv with it. They're going to experience all the forms of communication and all the different types of communication. This will be used in any other class that they take at the high school, as well as hopefully the rest of their life. No new staff is required. There's two classes scheduled for this upcoming year. All my sources came from improv classes that I have taken, books, experiences, meeting with professors at Open University, as well as the IB school in Utica. The students will work on journals for reflection. So when you think about improv, the first thing that comes to your mind, I'm sure, is second city. Right? Everybody thinks, "Oh, I'm going to an improv show." This is not that type of improv. It is improv-based thinking, which is through the use of games and different things like that. However, when you think about improv-based thinking, it means you're going to join a situation, you're going to make specific choices in that situation, you must be aware of what's happening around you, and you must be a present presenter or participant in that. You might make a lot of different things happen, you could play along, you could fail. You might succeed in the situation, but no matter what, you're going to react to that situation, and then they're going to reflect on what worked, what didn't, and more importantly, what can they do to be better. We're going to go over strategies for whatever type of communication we're studying at that point, and then, as always, we're going to try it again. The unit that I chose to go over with you is personal character, because to me, that's important. How we perceive ourselves, as well as how we communicate with others from ourselves, and how we communicate with ourselves is the most important thing that we can do. And it really encourages yourself, gets you moving, and gets things happening. So what they would be doing in this is studying interpersonal communication. This would be done through improv games, goal-setting discussion, and like I said, just trying things, looking at what worked, looking at how different people perceive you. And this would also lead into interpersonal small group mass communication. They would be working to improve their own communication skills, their voice, and providing positive communication.
That's it, thank you for that. Any questions? Very good, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. And the second presentation will be Mrs. Barnett presenting IB math. Now, there's not a curriculum that goes along with this per se, and the fact that the curriculum comes from the diploma program, so we can't really put it into our IB program. So the diploma program, it does go into our Atlas, involves we do, and then Frank instructor on, we also wanted to make you aware of the changes as well, too.
So speaking of improv. Yes. I'll make it short and sweet. So basically, at the DP level for IB, we previously had IB math, so IB got rid of that, so we really don't have a choice. We're introducing two new courses. And there's lots of As, so I'm not going to lie, I get confused with them. So the first course is Analysis and Approaches, and then the second course is Applications and Interpretations. Now, both of those, we're going to offer at the standard level and the higher level, so that's really four courses. So now our students do have a little bit more choice in what they pick at that math level. This kind of just goes over how we're going to kind of roll it out in the school, and this is how it was recommended by IB as well. Previously, math studies was an IB DP course that was offered. We didn't personally offer it, though. But the new applications course is kind of pigging back off of many of that content, and that's at the standard level there. Math SL, which we currently offer, and that's what most of our students will take if they're in the diploma program, that's going to piggyback really well with the Analysis and Approaches course. So that, again, is going to be at the SL level, as well as the HL level. Now, the applications HL, they're like, "We'll see what happens." So it's not a direct correlation on that HL one, so we're going to have to kind of see which students are interested and how we're going to integrate that. Both of those courses are going to be offered how they currently are over two years, so it's a lot of content to just do in one year. So all of those will be offered in two years. Why the change? Basically, the math, especially HL level, was really hard, like super-duper hard. And the IB noticed that really only about 15% of the diploma program students enrolled in that level. So there is a certain requirement of HL level courses that all students have to take, and they weren't taking them in math. So they wanted more choice for students. Also, Ms. Brown kind of piggybacked on the university and workplace, that we need to learn how to communicate, so these courses have a lot more interaction with technology and, as well as conceptual thinking. Pretty much it. The major difference between the two? The analysis class, that's going to, again, mimic really what we have in the SL right now. That's basically the how in math. So those students that are maybe in engineering, any kind of math-focused course, that's going to be the best option for them. But not everyone is gung-ho about math. So applications, that one's going to be more of an applied math, that doesn't mean lower level. I would say they're very comparable in terms of difficulty level, but they're going to be experienced, they're not just going to be given equations, they're going to have to figure out where it comes from. So the application course focuses on why, so it's going to be a different type of learning in that class. The interesting part is that all of the courses share the same five topics, so they're all going to have numbers, algebra, functions, trig, geometry, statistics, and calculus. So 60 hours are actually shared by both courses. So it's going to be in the approaches to teaching and the approaches to learning, that's going to be a lot of the difference there. If you really wanted to see all the content and objectives, I did hyperlink those, so if you're bored later, you know. But just to kind of show you, those are the hours that each course will have, very comparable in both courses. So that, especially that first day of school, we're going to actually all meet together as a class and make sure that students are placed correctly, because I don't really think we knew what the two courses were until we both got the training this summer. Again, if you're really bored, you can scan that QR code, and it'll tell you the math names and how they've changed. There's really only a few major changes. Most of it has to do with communication and technology. And then for the visual people like myself, I liked this picture, because it kind of shows how much they overlap in the common topics between all four of the courses. But IB's dictating it, and we're just rolling it out as we see fit for our students. Any questions? There's a lot more in there, but...
So how would you evaluate the students? Because I'm guessing, since it's very new, you have to see what their skill set is and where they can be placed.
So depending on the course, so I know, like, we're talking about prerequisite-wise, like where they're going to be placed. As far as the analysis course, we kind of looked at the topics, and that looks like you would at least have to be through Algebra II, according to like the contents and the state standards. And the applications, we have a couple students that have not taken Algebra II yet, but we feel, and looking at it, that that's going to be a good course for maybe those students that want the DP, but they're not at help one, you know, by the time they're a junior. So the application course is kind of widening that, there's a lot of Algebra II content in that. But then there's also a lot of wiggle room within the course. So even if, like, maybe a student's like, "I'm going to do SL," and then second semester, they want to do HL, we're going to be dual seating those, because it's very, we just might have to implement different things. It's going to be a fun place here.
This is only for the IB students?
Only for the IB TV, the DB, so the junior seniors, yep. And it gives more action for current students as well, even if they're not in the diploma program, there's two more courses that weren't previously there, which will be good. Any other question?
I have a comment and a question. First, thank you for bringing this to us. I'd like to see the, or hear the thought process behind the changes that go into the curriculum. So, you know, gearing this towards different fields in math, I think is very valuable. And then Debbie, the piece of improv and learning to deal with, or learning to focus on empathy, that's something that I've been talking to my engineers about every day for the last several months, right? You know, in my world, it's learning to, learning to understand your customer, to try to figure out, you know, what, how is my software really going to address that? So learning to, learning to hear their words, but then focus on body language and really pick up on those emotions is, it's something, like you said, it's something that we don't all have. So I appreciate hearing that that's being built into our curriculums. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any else? I guess, kind of follow-up question for Mrs. Brown, so... So just so I'm clear, this is a new class, right? Okay, never been taught before. So maybe this is better for you. So do we have a bandwidth of students available to have a class like this?
Yeah, as far as seats?
So I guess, yeah, so I guess here's my fear, is that if we're adding a lot of, and I like that we have a variety, I think it's awesome, but when you have a large selection, what tends to happen is you pull kids from other places, like theater, or, you know, band, or whatever, you know, some of these other classes that may be struggling with class size, so it thins out the population in those other classes, and thus thins out the, doesn't give those teachers an opportunity to...
Yeah, there's only kids up at the high school and that, and there's still kids in classes they probably necessarily wouldn't want to be in, so I think there's still opportunities for different choices, and trying to line up and make sure that we're offering kids classes they want to be in versus classes that we have teachers with certifications in. So trying to make sure that we have a student-friendly schedule and making sure these are options they want to take. So when we looked at running this class, like, first, there's a whole process of proposing the class, it has to go through the department, then the administrators at the building, it has to go through the department, it has to then, the building as a whole, basically, and then we start writing the curriculum. One of the things that we did with this class, too, was Mr. Wolf already put it into the schedule, so as an option for kids to take, and that was one of the things, we always have the option not to run the class. So kids take alternatives, so then we look at it, and we see, you know, even as the middle school principal, I would always sit down and look at the class, and we, as we've gone to IB, we had less choice, but in the first part of my career as the middle school principal, the kids had a lot of choice, but there was always decisions that I would have to make, of, "Do I run six sections of this, or five sections of this, and then run four sections over here?" So it's the same thing at the high school, they sit down, they look at it, and then they try to make it a big puzzle piece, because also, too, you can't have people with only half the schedule filled and that, and so you got to kind of put all the pieces together. And that was one of the stipulations when we went ahead and looked at the class, was trying to see and make sure that speech classes that Debbie was already running weren't, you know, taken away from that, because that wouldn't make any sense to just have less kids in that, as well as the theater classes, still knowing where they were at. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, it's being operated as a general elective as well, and I do know that both the speech and the theater classes, I believe, both grew in a moment as well.
Is there any... It's my next, that was just, you're one of my fears of that, if you have, and I know I've seen it, and you answered the question, but just to explain why I was asking, because, you know, when you thin out the population of kids, and now you have to start cutting teacher schedules and cutting teachers' time, all that.
Yeah, we make sure it's a balance between making sure that we have, because ultimately the job, our mission here is to take the kids to make sure they're getting what they need, but at the same time, if you don't have a teacher there to teach them, they can't have a class anyway. So you balance that, and that's the game you play with the schedule, and that's where Mr. Wolf and Mr. Hopkins have to sit there hour after hour with that schedule, and that master schedule is quite a feat, you have to take care of and try to balance all of that out, and get all the pieces to fit together, while still making sure student interest drives that. It's just like when we had CTE classes and different courses like that, yes, they pulled from someplace, but hopefully what you're getting is kids that were maybe in a course that that teacher, who might be, you know, with a different certification, has more options than to go teach another course at that point. Maybe the teachers are multi, they're certified in two and three areas, like I'm actually certified in four different areas, and so that gives you the flexibility to be able to do that. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Please.
What is the class called?
Communication as Improv.
Okay. And then, so how does somebody take it in the fall, if it's just starting in the fall, and they've already got their schedule? Like, how do we do that if we're introducing something new in the fall?
Well, it was on the, it was on the course scheduling, sketch on sheet.
Oh, wow.
The spring, yes.
Oh, okay.
We had it on that.
Oh, okay.
So that was part of the, we run it, and that wasn't like a guarantee. We would still provide the curriculum to you as having written, so it might run the following year. We've done that with courses. And we've done that with other courses, too, where we run, there was a chemistry course for a long time at the high school that we would run every other year, because we didn't quite have enough kids, and so we just balanced. And that's one of the things that colleges do, too. You would take maybe a college course that, you know, you have to kind of keep your eye on it, because it only runs every couple of years. And so that's another way in which to get these different options for kids without causing issues with due staffing as well, too. So it's all a balancing act, and we try to make sure that we're taking care of both the student interest, and then, like I said, ultimately, we got to make sure that lines up with what teachers would teach.
And what grades are you gearing this class towards?
Nine through twelve, any grade, okay.
I love it.
Yes, sir.
So just to be clear, too, we had enough student interest that we're running two sections in the first semester, so like, I don't know, 50 kids or something like that, enough to...
Is Mr. Wolf here still? Can I have you come up, please?
Sure. So I'm just trying to get perspective, it's not like speech is...
Contact.
Filling up all of Debbie's, or not speech, Communications Improv, it's not like filling up her entire schedule. She has two sections of that.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, I don't have the enrollment numbers through to the classes, but they're approximately 45 in each class.
Okay. Just to give you some idea, total number of kids.
Yeah, when we have an idea for each class, whether it's an elective, whether it's a general elective or a specific elective, as Ken pointed out, we don't want to draw from other sections, classes, or subject areas to reduce those, which could, as you pointed out, lead to losses in classes for this teacher or this department. You can't create kids out of nowhere, it's the same number of kids around, it's a matter of where they're going from.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Maybe it would be helpful to explain, for those of us that aren't in the academic world on a day-to-day basis, what that looks like when we decide to add a new class or new offering. We just don't say, "Oh, we'd like to do this." The process is a wealth planned out. How long does that take? Is it a six-month process, is it a year process? What does that look like? For us, and I think the general public would like to kind of attend that.
Yeah, for this class, it was about two years. There has to be a perfect purpose and a need for it, so that's number one. Ken's put together a pretty clear process that articulates who's responsible for what, going up the chain from presenting to department members, to the front office, to central office, et cetera, just to make sure that all stakeholders have a voice, that people in the same department of which they're in agree with it, find it valuable, find a need for it. That's why it's not just one person bringing a great curriculum, slinging over, saying, "Hey, let's do this." It's not the game we plan out to do and serve our students well. So in this case, two years, it could be a year.
It could be, yeah, it could be as short as, I would say, probably about six, seven months. We have deadlines, and which, one of the biggest things in order to run is it's got to be the student course catalog, and that typically has to be done by January, I think it is, January, February, we're kind of getting it out there, getting it in front of the kids. So that has, and then we also have timelines for proposal, because you've got to get in front of your department, you've got to get in front of your, the building, and then if it impacts other buildings, then you might even have to go that, to that extent. And then you got to go through the process, and then you bring it forward. Sometimes we're able to get it written in the spring and get it forward, sometimes, depending on how things are going and how many presentations we've been doing, it gets postponed a little bit and pushed back a little bit sometimes in the summer. But if they, the teacher out of the classroom, we've been doing this more in the last three, four years, is writing curriculum during the summer, so they're not missing student time, and so we're able to help offset that a little bit financially, have them come in, and they can do more than three, four hours than on a Sunday, because they're worried about their classes, and they've got to be called back and so forth, and ask questions and that, so they can really then work during the summer, and that's worked out quite a few of the teachers have taken advantage of that. So that's why you're seeing a little, sometimes it seems curriculum in August and so forth, and getting ready to write it.
Or did you have something? He already answered. Okay. Yes, sir.
So in this specific area, I will be 100% transparent, and I will take any of the blame in regards to offering this course. So I'm going to say probably, yeah, it was at least two or three years ago, I had come to Ken, and we were having conversations, and it was mainly due to my two oldest boys who went off to school, one in Kentucky, one in Pennsylvania, totally different tracks. They'd come home, their friends would come over, I'd talk to them, "What courses are you taking, are you taking?" And what was consistent amongst almost all of them was that they were all required to take stats and communications. It did not matter what your major was, it didn't matter if you were going to a private liberal arts school or a public university. It was almost universal. And so I was chirping at Ken for a long time, saying, "Ken, our kids coming out of our high school, we got to be giving them stats and communication classes, because even if, even if they go into a career, Chad, like what you were talking about, the better our students are communicators, or knowing how people view them." You know, we have our own view of ourself and how we think we come off, and a lot of times, we don't know for many years how people really interpret us, or our body language, or how we communicate. And the better that we can move our students along in these areas, I think we are just giving them a huge leg up, no matter what they do. So I'll take blame for some of this and that, yeah, I've been asking for some more of these types of classes.
And the high school schedule would evolve with time, and we try to do it in such a way that it doesn't cause layoffs as well, too. So I mean, we're trying to balance both of them, but ultimately, you know, we do try to make sure that we're meeting student interest. We look at, you know, we're putting in a computer programming class that you're going to be seen here, kind of reviving that a bit, and looking at some different offerings in that area as well, too. That is a high-interest area, it is a very well-paid area, if you can get kids interested in this area, it's a high-heat area. So we're always constantly evolving with that schedule and trying to make sure we're meeting the needs of the kids, while still trying to balance that with the certifications and the employment of the teachers as well, too. And we've done it so far, I don't think we've really, you know, other than with the Chinese language to Spanish, we've really not had to lay on anybody else.
I think you have Mr. Gibb in town, you have to... Nope.
I'm used to him by now, this. We're not getting him robbed up a little bit, we're not making him earn his big money over there.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else, board members? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm just surprised you didn't come back and say, "Well, yeah, Christ, we don't need to teach that."
Restraint. Nice. Restraint, that's good. Board member drove. Mr. Sam Barnum? Mr. Sam Barnum.
Good evening, everyone. Before I invite Jesse and Carly from Baker Tilly, our municipal advisors, I just want to give you a very brief kind of overview of what we're going to be discussing first. We have our Series Two Building Insight Minds that we would like to discuss sale of this coming, the next few months. And so they're going to be discussing the sale of those products. In addition to that, we borrow, just as a reminder to everyone, from the state's school bond loan revolving fund. We do that because we levy debt mills at 7.9% every year to keep them steady. But the level of debt that we have requires us to borrow because we can't levy enough debt to service, or levy enough mills to service that debt. And so what we're looking to do is refinance that school bond loan revolving fund debt, which at this particular point is a little over $38 million. And looking at refinancing that debt at a lower interest rate to save our taxpayers' money. So I just wanted to be very clear of what Baker Tilly is here. There are municipal advisors or our financial advisors that assist us in doing refundings and also settling new debt as well. So without further ado, again, I'd like to welcome Jesse to come up and as well, I know Carly is probably, she's just going to...
She was soaking in all the communication skills. She's going to see what happens to you right now. She's not going to do that when she begins presenting.
Thank you.
Gosh, you have an accountant up here somewhere, really, maybe I need to take the class here a little bit, so. Yeah, just as Sam said, thank you for having us here tonight. Basically, I've got a paper packet and then I've also got it up on the slide. And what's really driving the point that Sam brought up is this is a tax-exempt interest rate trend chart. And if you look towards the middle of the chart, this is October 18. And then as you make your way to the far right, that is the current interest rate trend here at the beginning of August. So interest rates have just really dramatically dropped off pretty rapidly and very quickly in the past several months over the past year. If you caught the news, the Federal Reserve just recently cut their targeted interest rate and demand for high-grade bond issues like we hear at Heather and Oxford. You have a very high bond rating, you're also backed by the state of Michigan. They're getting very low borrowing rates. We did a 13-year bond issue for another school district last week and their true interest cost, which kind of takes everything into account for 13 years, was under 2%. So when these things happen, we obviously want to bring our boards and our administrations up to speed as win this type of market, what options you have, what that may look like. And so that's the main driver for this discussion item. So if you go to the next page, just as Sam said, it really provides us with two opportunities. The first being the 2019 bonds or Series Two. Just as Sam mentioned, that is the second phase of the voter-approved bond issue. You do those capital improvements that were approved by voters. We were originally targeting that to be sold about early 2020 because that was the timing. But due to the drop in interest rates, it seems like a great opportunity to get those, get that funding at a very low cost to the community or low cost to the taxpayers. So we want to take advantage of that. At the same time, the School Bond Loan Fund or School Loan Revolving Fund is currently charging the interest rate of 3.4% on that balance. So that's the interest rate we're being charged for that balance. It's estimated that we could get the interest rates, or getting that from the private sector, to 2.45 to 2.8%. And if we're able to do that, the estimated savings over the life of our bonds and the school bond loan fund balance right now would be $2.2 million. And again, these are all funded by the 7.90 mills. It doesn't interact with the general fund that solely services our bonds. So all of those savings would go to the community members as far as taking care of that bond loan rate over a shorter period of time. And then the estimated, just as Sam mentioned, the estimated bond power amount to do that would be $38.5 million. So what we're looking to do essentially is to get $9.4 million to fund the improvement sooner at a very low interest rate because of the market. And then at the same time, we want to refinance that balance to generate some savings to the school district on that. So those are the two main items that we would take care of in one process. So then the last page is just proposed schedule events, just to outline what the process would be, you know, if the board didn't want to move forward. So tonight, we're just introducing the topic. You could adopt the authorizing resolutions at the August 27 meeting. So the bond attorney puts the resolutions together and puts the parameters, what allows the process to go forward. And that is a board-adopted item. Then we would be looking to have the bond sale at September 30. So we would take bids from underwriters, banks, anyone who wants to purchase these bonds. And per state law, whoever provides you with the lowest cost or interest rates is awarded the bonds. So we're going to get a lot of competition for that, especially with your high bond rating. Then there's another items, the board secretary, we have an application because these bonds are qualified by the state program. We have a final official statement. We print that final official statement and then we're scheduled on October 22. So what that would happen is two items. First, the $9.2 million would go into your construction account to fund the Phase Two improvements that you want to get done. So that funding would be available. And then the other refinancing bond proceeds would be provided to the state of Michigan to move that balance from a 3.4% over to a 2.45 or 2.5 or whatever it is. Hopefully it will come at lower and that savings figure will be higher. So again, that's just an outline of what the process would look like should we decide to move forward with it. Any comments or questions? Eric?
So, excuse me, I...
No, no problem.
I'm an engineer, so I don't speak your language.
But he has empathy.
Yeah, but he has empathy. Andrew Strang. We'll look at the floor together. I'm sorry for your choice.
So you had said for a period, slide number three, when we refinance you for a period of time, what is that period of time?
That is a great question. So the proposed bond issue, I'm just going to pull up that detail, is estimated to go through 2027, so roughly that's about an eight-year bond issue. And so we would be, for an eight-year bond issue right now, the, you know, the interest rate, just as we showed in the slides, would move to a fixed interest rate about that period of time. So we would move that $30 million balance, 3.4%, over to the lower interest rate for about eight years.
Okay, so just, so when you showed your trend chart, you're showing interest rate from 9.0, from 0.90 to 1.77. And on slide three, you're showing 2.45 to 2.8%. So I guess I'm trying to understand why you had them out there when on slide two, it's between 1.7 and 0.9. Is there, what am I missing? What's the connection?
No, great question. So the chart, we have to pull an index, so there's a nationwide index of what tax-exempt interest rate is.
This is just a big example.
Right, it's more of a trend to say, hey, interest rates are going down. This is what my indexes are saying. But based upon our credit rating, where we land, that's just an estimate. And I would say that I always like to be conservative. You know, I don't like to walk in the door and say, we're going to save X, and then hopefully it comes in higher. And then when we do it, we report it and that those rates are lower.
Okay, so does this actually, all I know is when I refinance my house.
Yeah.
I'm just speaking from a very general term. So does this actually, it looks like we're saving money.
Mm-hmm.
But does this actually cost money to do it? You roll that Z into the end product that we have here?
Yes, so all of the costs are paid out of the bonds, just the same as refinancing your house.
Sure.
I want to capture that difference in interest rate, but to do that, I'm going to incur these types of costs. So that is the savings after including the cost. Because nothing comes out of the general fund for this, the bond has to pay for itself. So that is after cost.
Okay, so what is that cost? Just guessing.
Yeah, no, I've got those. So it was around, for the $38 million, we've got around $400,000. And then the other, the $9.2 million is, let me see, around $150,000. So most of these agencies, everyone you work with, they charge a power amount of the bond, like your construction contracts. And again, I expect that to come in lower, but I want a budget X and have it come in Y. So, but great question because certainly you can capture the difference in interest rate, but if you don't include the cost, you're not getting the true net savings figure. And that's what we've got reported to you.
So the true net savings is 2.2?
Right, whatever you have in fact, and I've taken the cost into account there.
And again, three or that was next to...
Now, that leads me to my question. When it rates, say we go through this process and we get, we decide that we're going to move forward or whatever we decide. Say we decide, yep, we're going to move forward and rates go up. Is it from the date that we say we're going to move forward, much like home, it locks in for X amount of period of time? Or it's fluctuating until you actually close and sell the bond?
Great question. We actually do not get our final interest rates until September 30th. So that is the date when we lock in.
Correct.
Now, to your point again, if the chart begins to move away from us, you know, and that savings figure drops, or hey, now it's better to wait till the spring with a timeline, we will cancel the transaction and not occur any costs. The resolution that you will adopt has a minimum savings parameter in it. You know, for this to legally proceed, it must achieve X. So that is another trigger. You know, you don't just, hey, good news, we saved a dollar and cut off these costs. It's another way that's in that resolution to make sure you're getting the value. So what we do is we're tracking along with the interest rates. I'll keep Tim and Sam up to date. And then obviously, about two to three weeks before that, we take another check in the market. Yes?
Sam? Our total bond dollars that we owe the state, what is that now?
But exceeds that number. This is, again, not our bond.
This is only, this is only school bond loan revolving fund.
So...
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I think I interrupted you.
No? This arranges my question somewhere.
This is nearly the school bond loan revolving fund balance that we have, what we have as of today. That's $38 million change. So that is what we have borrowed throughout the past several years from the state in order to make our debt payments, our old bond payments. We do levy 7.9 debt mills annually to our taxpayers. But that 7.9 debt mills doesn't generate enough revenue to pay off our principal and interest on our existing bonds. Therefore, we have to borrow from the school bond loan fund approximately $8 to $9 million a year in order to make those existing debt payments, both principal and interest. So what this is doing, a component of this, the largest component, is refinancing that $38 million of school bond loan revolving fund debt, which is, again, not bonds, but a revolving fund that is loaned from the state to us.
I see the recall doing this three, four years ago?
Before we went out to the voters and asked for our new bond, we refinanced two or three times.
Correct, but that was not the school bond loan revolving fund. That was previous actual debt.
Okay.
So previous bonds that were at a higher interest rate.
Okay.
That were refunded, similar, but not quite the same.
Okay, that's why I was asking the question because the numbers were much different before.
All right. But I believe that the savings, to my recollection from three years ago when we did do these refundings, were in excess of either $2.5 or $2.7 million of true net savings to the taxpayers.
Okay, right. Thank you.
Chad?
Sam, how many, a second. You just, you just told Dan that the other debt was actually debt. Help me understand what that was.
Because this feels real.
It's all real. It's all real, it's how you classify the debt. So again, think about this as, in essence, a loan from the state. And we are paying this loan on an annual basis. We're actually borrowing on an annual basis. We're not in repayment mode yet on the school bond loan fund. Then we have, in addition to the school bond loan fund, which is true debt, actual debt, we also have actual debt of our old bonds that the school district actually sold in the past. Okay? So it's two different forms of debt.
Still fuzzy?
I'm counting the bonds.
No. You go ahead, Matt.
I don't know, I feel like... Yeah, I feel like my habit is, sounds like elementary, like very, very simple. But if we have all of this debt and we're paying all of this interest and we have money, whether it be, you know, we're in the black, but we have money, why would we pay interest? Why would you have a credit card pay? I'm putting it back in my own personal thing. If I had money in my savings account, why would I pay interest on a credit card and not just pay my credit card off? Why, so I'm looking, so I'm turning that to a school fund thing and I'm saying, if we have all these multiple different types of debts and some are from old school bond loans from the state, why wouldn't we start eating away at that?
We are on an annual basis.
If we're in the black, like if we're doing well and we have some extra money.
Sure.
Why wouldn't we eat away at that as opposed to paying interest on it?
Well, we are. And so you act what you have to do, and that's a great question that you're asking. But you need to realize that we have several different funds. Our general fund, which is really what you're alluding to, is our operating fund for the district.
Okay.
And that's where we're in the black. This is a completely separate fund, which is a debt fund. And so we levy debt and we levy mills to our taxpayers in order to repay the debt that we have incurred in the past from bonds and also the school bond loan fund. And so the bottom line is, is we have to separate in our minds that we have an operating fund, the general fund, which indeed, we're doing very well. And it enables us to basically have superior debt rating so that when we go to the market and sell debt, which the revenue and the expenses go into a separate fund, that we're able to get the best rates for those types of debt servicing. So one helps the other, if you will. But really would not be wise and maybe not even possible to use general fund money to repay debt funds or, I should say, bonds. Because we are repaying debt. Every year, we pay both principal and interest on old debt. But for every bond you sell, there's a debt schedule. It's like an amortization schedule for your home's mortgage if you owe a bank for your mortgage payment on your home. It's exactly the same. You make principal and interest payments on all debt.
This is why I was communications...
Dan?
So would it be safe to kind of look at it this way? Are one of these, one of these debts would be like our mortgage and the other one would be like a whole night with a line of credit from the state?
Sure. I think you'd, would you disagree with that? I think that's not, that's a fair analogy. That's a fair analogy.
Because the line of credit is allowing us to operate on a day, on a day-to-day when we're still paying off the bonds that we borrowed maybe 10, 15, 20, 25 years ago. I'm a simple man. And then my other question, one more, one more. How many districts, because I want people to understand that we're not sounding like we're the only district, but how many districts in the state, just put a percentage on it, have debt the way the structure we have?
112.
112%.
112 districts total. And they just shot a list the other day, so that's... I hope you can do that. That's why I got to go to class. We're just smart, hope is to shut your mouth.
I was wondering who we got doing this if he says 112%.
Yes, but you're actually, there's only one another 12%. No, 112 districts. Several in Oakland County, like Lori participates in this, in this program, yourselves, Hazel Park. I mean, there's, this is a well, you're not the only one that participates in this program. The goal of the program overall is to get school capital improvements done at lower miller rates. Because just as Sam said, for this, the amount of improvements that you've done, to really just do it on the road, you have to levy something higher than 7.9 and then unfortunately you have to pass down to the community members. So the reason schools go into this program is to get these improvements done with the goal of keeping the property tax mortgage as low as possible in the community. Yep, but great question.
That's a fantastic point to say as well.
Yeah, and just to, Sam, because we have several new board members, you did all of this about a year or so ago.
Yes.
And showed us where it's going to start to actually, remember that?
Yes.
I think it'd be good to re-up that.
Sure.
To give us an education on this because, because understanding the separateness of these and the reason why we go into this is because we don't want to increase, right?
Absolutely.
And how they interrelate, I think, spend it some time.
Agreed.
It'd be really good.
Anticipating, again, we have several new board members. I think Justin, you assisted me with that presentation approximately a year and a half ago as well. So I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, it was really good, it was really educational.
Just to understand, it's announced that your firm manages these types of transactions specifically?
Right. So we're regulated by the Securities and Exchange Commission, you know, and does kind of... So we're regulated by the Securities and Exchange Commission, you know, does transactions, and we're called municipal advisor. And so we have a fiduciary responsibility to the school district, to on the seller's side. So we're not the banks, the end rangers, anyone's purchasing the bonds on the other side of it. We don't work for that. So our goal is to keep you up to speed, get you to the market, the official statement, then get the bids, and then whoever gives you the lowest interest rate then buys the bond. So they keep those rules separate. And I'd be like, hey, guys, you could save this, and oh, I think 4% is a great rate and I should buy it. You know, they keep those two rules separate, so.
Yes?
I think maybe it might be an opportunity for us as a board to see if we can bring somebody from the MASP to do a finance class. Maybe on Saturday workshop or something like that, because of the amount of newness that we can have on the board. So that might be, or we can, and all this class is coming up in November. There's a board member retreat, so if finance is really kind of particular to your fancy, it does a great place to kind of get some information.
Any other board members? Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Sam, you have another question?
I do, and it actually ties in very well to this. It's our annual application for the school bond loan fund. It just basically is a resolution that the board votes on to ensure that we can borrow once again. We borrow usually every spring, but they'd like us to file it with the state in the summer prior to the following year's spring. So all this is, is again, the school bond loan qualification, uh, application, and just a resolution to.
Would someone like to make that motion? Eric?
Move to approve this school board qualification and loan program resolution as presented.
Support Dan?
Support.
Discussion. Calls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers. Human resources.
So no, um, no personal recommendations tonight, but as you've, you've been watching your email, we've.
Busy over there, aren't you?
Do late developments in terms of staffing needs. And so we're prepared with our administrators and those postings to interview later this week and early next week to put up our final positions and, you know, do some, some internal movement. So, so we're still going through that. And like I said, once, uh, once we get started this year and we settle in, I will, um, I'll bring a summary to the board in terms of where we're at and where our movement has been and, you know, ultimately, those are our final positions. But really, it took place this summer, and we'll summarize that for it.
Fantastic, fantastic. Student services.
Good evening. In your board packages, you have updated Code of Conduct for the upcoming school year. Um, the code was, um, reviewed and vetted with our special ed, our attorney through Clark Hill. Um, he reviewed the code, he wrote a memo in which he stated, um, on the whole, I found the Code of Conduct to be compliant with state and federal law and consistent with the recent revisions to the Michigan School Code. Um, he did make a couple edits to it. In the past, we had the, um, seven factors to consider prior to suspending or expounding a student just in the beginning and the introduction of the code and, um, to ensure consistency in the implementation of the seven factors to consider. He embedded it multiple times, um, throughout the document. Um, and he also updated some language regarding arson and criminal sexual conduct to align with the revised School Code. Uh, other than that, he felt that our Code of Conduct was, um, compliant with all rules and regulations. Just a few minor changes.
Thoughts, comments, questions?
Our, oh, please, our, our student Code of Conduct, um, that, that needs to be, obviously, we need to vote on any changes that are here or it just kind of flows right through?
No, it's just an informational screening for you. You don't have to vote on anything.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure before giving this school, because I think the next time we meet, the school.
Correct, so we were targeting bringing it to you just for informational, right?
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Hi, actually, I, I just have a comment. And thank you for bringing this up, because I was just reading through some of my older emails about all the legislative changes that had taken place. And, um, and I think it was the MASP talking about looking at your student Code of Conduct. So I'm glad they were in touch with it, thank you.
I think, um, Jordan, he has a few things to talk about in the athletic code.
Can I approach the match?
Nice jacket, Mr. Anthony.
Thanks. Uh, so athletically, for the Code of Conduct, just some information for you. It's, uh, two, five slight tweaks or changes. Um, I believe you guys in the page didn't have a copy of the Code of Conduct. Um, did you have a chance to look over those? Does anybody have any questions about anything within that?
So under transfer students, I see one had it saying students will be eligible for one year, will be ineligible for one year in the sport they participated in in their previous school and all the other requirements were lined out, so why?
So that's an NHSA change. They're trying to tighten transfers athletically motivated. That's the change that they made, which we have to line up there.
So all school districts have to have this?
Yeah, every school district can stay there. Fifteen exceptions to that rule. Uh, whether it be you make a whole completely move from another district into ours or 14 other, I think it's divorce parent situation, but.
So, so let's say I'm a student and I play softball, you know, football. I can't play softball or football in the school. So any sport?
The NHSA is.
Right, so they could, yeah, they could play any other sport with those two.
All right.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, a couple, and I don't really think these really are going to apply to us, but question anyway. Um, I noticed there was something in there about coaches being DQ'd for conduct. Do we still pay them if they're rejected and have to sit out, I think it was about one game or two games? Or, I mean, I don't think it's gonna happen, but.
Yeah, yeah, so a coach would still be paid. Uh, now, you know, if we're fired, uh, that'd be a HR question at that point, where we're gonna go. But, uh, you know, we could get ejected if a question involved, right? You know, there's so many different variables within that. So, you know, if the coach is cussing an official or, you know, making the school district look bad, not representing our kids well, yeah, there's going to be some ramifications.
And then one other question was, um, going through some of the, like, if students caught with, with alcohol or others, there's like four or five offenses before they're actually taken off and lose their captain or lose their letter. Why don't we give that much leniency for a privilege to play? I mean, I know I'm calling you to be a little hard-nosed on this, but you screw up, we forgive you. You screw up again, you know what? Sit out and let somebody else take your spot on the team.
Yeah, you know, I think I'm one of the same philosophy you are. However, you know, I had 13 years of doing this, I've found that kids, kids, a lot of times, you know, maybe they don't have the front or back, that other kids do have and that support at home that they, that they need. So, you know, it's up to us as a school district to guide those kids. Sometimes they do make two mistakes, and we have to do our best to try to keep them involved as long as we can. At some point, it does become them just slapping us in the face and saying, I don't really care what you do.
Right, and that's why I was kind of going with the, you know, I mean, he goes up like the fifth offense and.
Well, there are provisions in there. There are consequences that step number one, offense number, it's not like you can do, it's not a situation where you can have your first offense and nothing happens. Just, it, there are steps along the way. It's progressive, it's progressive. And there's a self-reporting in there as well. If you self-report that you have a substance abuse problem or something like that, then some of those conditions of participation are looked at a little bit more favorably. I think when we wrote, rewrote this four years ago, uh, we looked at how do we get our student athletes the help that they need if they have an issue? And I think that's really one of the things that athletics provides is an outlet, not just outside of the classroom, but it, it gives us an opportunity to help correct a behavior that maybe isn't what they need to be doing at the age of 15, 16, 17, 18, but that they're gonna carry on. There is consequences, but, um, one of the things that I have always been a big advocate for in our district is I have a hard time with it being an athletic Code of Conduct. I think it needs to be an extracurricular Code of Conduct. If we finance it, whether it's band, football, any sport, chess club, if we're paying for it and we're providing that outlet for a student, these rules and these parameters should fall on everybody.
We do have an extracurricular Code of Conduct.
Same as a mirror.
It's just.
It's just like, okay. Because I know that there's been sticking points where, you know, to Corey's point earlier, you're an athlete 365 days out of the year. Whether you just play football, as a freshman, you play football, you're an athletic Code of Conduct 365 days a year. That is a step that is up there, where our other students, at one point, didn't have to fall into that same category. I'm just of the belief that if, as a district, we provide funds for those opportunities, everybody should have to live under that same umbrella. I just, you know, everybody should be equal. So I, I'm glad that we have that, uh, because at one point we didn't.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, we may have to use that portion.
And.
By no large. We break it into.
And, and that's the great thing is we, we are providing opportunities and we are providing guidance. And if we think that it's important to provide that guidance on the athletic field, then we should provide that guidance wherever that student falls, so.
Anything else? Jordan, I have a question.
Um, and I may have missed it. We're living in a world where people are wanting to use a public setting to voice protest. Is that ability restricted in our Code of Conduct?
I guess I don't understand the question.
If, if, if someone wants to protest a social issue, somebody wants to protest or whatever, we live in a world right now where you put, you do that in display, you do that in a public setting, because then you make a big splash.
So you're talking, someone came to our fan base in there?
I'm saying if one of our athletes decided to show a protest for a cultural issue, a social issue, whatever it might be, and use the arena as the way to make that statement.
I guess all the kinds of third-party services to the school day, it's a learning process. Mr. Wolf would like to answer. If you would kind of step up or.
Your bench is long. You know, I almost don't need to, because Jordan, I mean, that's, that's where it's parked. If it's outside of the school day, um, it could impact the school day or a school activity, uh, because inevitably, kids can bring in those conversations, it can stir things up, create fights, problems, tension, um, and then that becomes something that we have to address because it's our school, our school day and our culture. Um, but if someone were to come to school or a school-related event and, and cause a disturbance in the activity, uh, whether it's the athletes or the fans, um, then we have, we have no choice and we're obligated to step in to protect that environment and the kids involved in it. So, um, to answer your question, in most cases, we might, uh, we might have to, because it's gonna impact the school day, um, and the educational setting.
And it has to disrupt the educational environment, and because kids still have freedom of speech. And so we kind of walk the fine line, just like in a graduation speech, you can't, if a kid starts going off on a bit of a tangent unless it's completely obscene or something, you can't stop them. It's the same thing with like a prayer. If you want to get up and you're giving the graduation speech and you want to give a personal prayer in the middle of it, you can't stop as well.
But I think, can I, and I, just out of my ass, Tim, because I think you were.
Stay there.
We've gone through this, right? You and I have gone through this.
No, no, no. Who's a law court? Court.
Legally, we can't stop somebody from going to protest or freedom of speech. We can't say, you can't wear, if, if, as a board, we make a decision that we're gonna privatize something, and all of a sudden, the athletic teams decide that they're gonna wear black shirts and protest, we can't stop that, correct? Because that's their freedom of speech.
Correct, but I, I guess I would say that with our students and our employees, if there is an issue or we feel that there is a potential issue, most of the time, um, we are proactively having conversations with our students or our employees, right? And so, uh, nobody likes to be surprised. So I'll just, um, I'll, I'll make up an event. Let's say that, um, the state of Michigan is going to cut all funding to public schools. And our teachers are all upset, and so they are gonna wear red every day to school to voice their opinion of displeasure with the state is doing. Okay, legally, can I stop that? No, but do we have conversations with our employees and say, listen, well, we understand, we may even agree with what they're saying. Okay, is, is this helping you be a better teacher in the classroom? Is this helping where we're out today? Is there another way that we can collectively, um, maybe have our voice heard in a different way or a better way? And so, um, I, I guess what I'm just trying to say is, when these situations come up, we try to use those communication skills to protect our culture and our environment. Because we don't want people, students or employees, coming into our district and feeling that they don't have a voice. At the same time, they also have to know that if I yell fire, there's repercussions for that. And so you just, you have to walk that fine line.
Anything else? Thank you. Unscheduled audience participation, do we have any white cards?
Yes, sir.
No. You have schedule of activities. Any clarifications? No. Final board comments? Mary?
Thank you. Another exciting band camp is in the books. It was my senior year band camp, Mount Cali. But another great marching band season this year, so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who participated and helped out with that. That's a whole lot of work, and the boosters do a whole lot of work to make that happen, a small group of people. I appreciate that. Uh, it's great that we can come up with, um, new ways to teach students. Um, like we were talking about the improv class. I did see that on the, on the list of classes, and I thought, wow, that's really interesting. I don't know if I've seen that before. Something that I think could be really helpful for folks to learn business communication skills, because it's so difficult for people to have conversations, for the younger kids having conversations with people, at least that's what I found, teaching them ways that it's just a part of life, I think that's great. And if we can come up with new classes like this and get the students where they're at. When I was younger, when my kids were younger, I thought, I'm gonna be a great mom and I'm gonna keep up with absolutely everything they do because I'm gonna pay attention. And why can't? I can't, I can't keep up with Twitter and Instagram and all that other stuff. But it's good that we know where they're at, you know, and we can get to them that way. Thanks, Sam, for the info on the finances. It is all very confusing. It wasn't too long ago, I was learning about all these things in school and it was very confusing then. So I appreciate the purpose and the idea that maybe you can do a little more work on this a lot, so. Can see. on this a lot, so can see. Oh, and signs. I want to say thank you for the signs at the high school, the blue signs that are up giving our state championship teams. And Tim, what you were just saying about being proactive with teachers or students, because I think the point with the protests is that people want to be heard. And I appreciate that we don't have any kind of policy that's saying that that doesn't happen, but the point is that people want to be heard, so let's make sure that people are heard and are given the place to do that, you know? So that's great, I appreciate that we're progressive in that way. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad.
Yeah, so I echo Mary's thoughts on the curriculum. And I think that goes, I think it takes us further in that conversation and understanding that not everybody's going the university route after graduation or anything. I think it's, I think it's things like this, it's small tweaks to curriculum to help the kids understand the value in the subjects that they're already, right? So to help them advance their career or just interact with neighbors, right? So, yeah, so I love hearing about that. And so the finances, and I don't know if my headache was coming on before that, but the finances, it doesn't help. So I mean, that conversation in general, right? It happens at home, too. Anyway, I've sat through the last budget discussion I think we had over at Clear Lake. And I think, to Dan's point, I think it would be valuable to talk through that again, just to help solidify those concepts in my head at least. Thank you.
I'm sure I'm going to come up with more questions during the weekend, I'm going to choose some questions up to you.
Thanks. Eric?
So just to kind of, kind of what Mary was saying about bands, so I got to see the first number, and it was amazing, what they did in five days blows my mind. So I'm really, really happy about that, just seeing how many people volunteer their time. So Mr. Weaver volunteered, Mrs. Hanser volunteered for five days. She was there for five days sleeping in a cot the size of a this. And it was great to see all those people there, just really cheering on the kids in the hot weather. So it was an amazing afternoon watching those kids. I would never volunteer, I would not even have any part of that. It's never going to happen. They keep trying to get me into it, it's never going to happen. Through air conditioning, I'd like to, but really you're soft and squishy.
That's true.
So anyway, thank both of you for your time there, I appreciate you looking out for our kids, so.
Cory?
I too like the improv and the math. I think in today's social media world where everything is typed and no emotion, we've kind of lost what you say, people can interpret different ways and can be taken wrong. So I think classes like that are going to help us get back to better communication and be able to kind of think on your feet. I mean, how many people are ready to sit in an interview and answer questions if you don't know what you're going to be asked? And classes like that, I think, are really going to help. I just, I love Mrs. Brown's passion, she, I think she's going to do very well. I'd like to hear a year from now, how well that class did. And then with the math, I know we talked a couple weeks ago about the changes with the common core and some of that, the topic of why you do certain things in math and understanding the why. I'm a why person, so I like to know why things happen for a reason. So that we're teaching the kids, this is why, to me, that's important.
Excited for school to start? That's all I got.
Good, thank you, Cory. Heather?
I echo what everybody else said, especially like what Cory said, excited for school to start. I thought the presentations were great, especially Debbie's, I thought that was super interesting. So, I agree, communication, that really was my major. It was interpersonal communication, which a lot of people, you know, my husband likes to kind of tease me about, but I like, people, there's so many people that just don't know how to communicate effectively. It's the effectiveness that carries over. And so, great job, that's it.
Good, thank you.
Dan? I'm smiling because when I was younger, my grandfather would say, it doesn't matter how smart you are, Danny, as long as you can communicate, you'll be okay. And to fifty years, I guess he was right. So it's interesting that education has shifted from what it was when I was in school to when most of us weren't in school to what it is today. And I agree with what Cory said, you know, inflection, you don't get from a text, you don't get face-to-face with somebody, what somebody sounds like. It's not often what you say, it's how you say it. And that has all the difference in the world. And when you just text it or you just email it, it has a whole different light. So while some people would say, well, what's communication improv? You know, that's just, I don't think it's a fluff class. I think it's something that taught the right way can be very, very valuable. So that takes me to my next point about leadership in this district. It takes leaders to understand that we need to provide something different than what we've had. So I'm grateful that Tim was able to communicate with Ken, and Ken kind of started digging and bringing in those types of classes. And there's more out there that we have to think about in the future. What's the future look like and how do we start to attack it today? In our leadership at the high school and the middle school, across our district, we have, you know, we ask some difficult questions about, you know, how are we going to get there, how are we going to do things? But it's all centered around student growth, and that's very, very important for us. And then the last thing, you know, the finance piece of it, we're not experts in finance. I'm sure other people in the community are much more adaptive at finances. I have complete faith and trust in our financial team, not just Sam. You've got a whole team up there that's, it's not just Sam sitting in his office, you know, we're guys' computers, it's Connie and Cory, it's the whole team. So please, Sam, let them know that we're appreciative of their work, and please, when you talk to Jesse and Carly, that we're appreciative of this type of opportunity, because this is what, this is what it takes in order to provide these types of different curriculum. You know, if we don't have an A-plus rated ability to borrow money or refinance our debt, I mean, we don't want to have the ability to offer those courses, because we're just trying to stay afloat. And that's one thing that we've always been able to do, is lead and not just stay afloat. We are leading, so we're doing a great job, we can do better. Good doesn't mean that you're perfect. So that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. The bi-literacy program, and I was proud of getting on the board when we voted to have that seal put on diplomas, and that was a, that was a really proud day. That and these tweakings of curriculums, I think it's important that we realize that all of these things are an expression of meeting our objective, which is the portrait of a graduate. That you have a school district that is being nimble enough and agile enough to say, if we've committed to these twelve principles, we got a hole here, we got to tweak some things, because not every kid's going to go to college, we got to do some things here. If we really care about the whole kid, then we're going to have some fun next year, two or three, because we're going to see these tweaks, because they're going to be, they're going to be aware of holes they have in their own commitment. And we're going to, oh, we got to adjust something here. And I just think this is fun, this is exciting and just well done, very good. And yes, Sam, I think if you pull back that report and just redo it, it explained everything as to why we take that secondary debt, so that we don't allow this percentile to go up when it comes to the tax account. Once you do that, everyone will go, ah, got it. So just redo that, because that really helped. David, thank you, working your butt off this summer, and thanks for the communication. It's really clear, concise, seeing all the stuff going on, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Denise, thank you very much for the codes of conduct. That has to be lots of fun. That, I can do numbers that I do not want to do. I think, I don't have anything else.
You, sir.
So just to add a couple of things, I do want to publicly thank Firmly Rooted Ministries for providing this past Sunday, two hundred and eighty backpacks for our students. And this is just not the first year that Firmly Rooted has been so gracious, but I think maybe our third or fourth year. And, yeah, everybody at Firmly Rooted doesn't get to see the students when they accept them and all that kind of stuff. And so I just, I want to make sure that your team and everybody there involved in this is, knows how much we appreciate it. So, yeah, I just want to make that public. And I also want to publicly thank our employees, that our directors, principals, our contractors, I mean, everybody is working their tail off trying to get ready. And when you do the amount of work that we had to get done in ten weeks, it's just a tremendous amount of work. So I'm sure that, you know, there will be a few things that we got to come back and tweak and fix on that, but I'm appreciative for the dedication, everybody really working hard to get these schools ready. So that's it.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to add that, I was up at the high school the other day, and the parking lot's looking great, the no parking areas are clearly painted and signed, and the, you've got the barriers up now, too, along where the fields are, and it's clearly marked where you can park and where you can't, because we hired a lot of that issue about stuff, not marked, and they've done this and that, it's all very clear. Thanks for getting that done, because that is definitely keeping our students and our community safe.
And our parents. And Mary goes, you can't park.
He was stopped in the Alizon, I told him, I want you to take a picture.
Right, Barbie photo. If the board can't follow the rules, nobody knows.
Must learn.
But I do hear that you'll have to talk to Mr. Jordan about that, you know? So great job keeping our students safe in our building. And I was explaining to my daughter, too, the value on why it's not just about parking close, and the driving and parking, but by having people parking next to the building, you know, it's a safety issue. And sometimes she said, oh, well, you know, she's a senior this year, and she's realizing stuff like that. I said, yes, you can't park right next to the building, it's a general safety issue. Oh!
So let's recount the scene. So as I'm parking illegally, Mary's telling her daughter about, you really shouldn't park. I said, hi, Mary. And she walks over, I'm just telling my daughter, you can't park. Oh, horrible parent.
So thanks for getting that done, too, since you know, it's time for the football season.
Just park wherever you want. Oakland County will give you a $25 ticket, consider it valet parking. Valet.
Don't listen to them.
Public, do not do that.
$25, by how many cars?
Three, more than $25 if the fire truck can't get through there.
Oh, yeah.
So let's just be real, emergency vehicles can't get through there, it's going to be more than $25.
So thank you, that was awesome.
All right, very good.
That's it?
Do you have anything under other?
I do not.
I have an other, other thing for you guys. I have been talking to Tim for several months now about, yes, Siri, about meeting...
The internet first.
There we go. About meeting once a month versus twice a month. There is no law that says how often you have to meet. We have now, for a good year, functioned, year and a half, two years, very efficiently. We've been doing well. And so the idea is, if, oh, stop it. Between you and Siri, you're fired. But the idea is this, we give our administration, our cabinet, an extra evening a month as a thank you for doing the job they're doing. And so what we do is we put more into one meeting a month. They get an extra day a month with their families. And if we need to call a special meeting, we do, we have that ability. But to test the waters and to see whether we can function in a one-meeting-a-month world, where other boards do, other districts do it, I don't see why we couldn't do it. And then I think what the challenge that I've laid upon Tim in thinking is that there'll be more in each meeting, there needs to be a lot of proactivity, because the cabinet needs to realize, you're not going to see us for thirty days. So you better be up in front, be in front, be, you know, be pro-planning, because things need to be approved and things need to be done, I think, especially in the financing area, always approving stuff, making sure that we have, you know, that stuff ahead of time. But man, I just, I think about the fact that, you know, they work all day, and then they're here in the, well into the evening, and if we could reduce that by fifty percent, why not try it at least? So I'm not, I'm not making for a motion right now, I just want to throw that on the table, maybe have just a brief discussion now. And if we end up, you can, you can talk to me privately, you know, and if I get a sense that it's something that we want to do, then we could make, what would be our steps if we wanted to do that, Tim?
I think you would, you'd make a motion, have your discussion, and as long as that passed, then I think our marching orders would be to go back and look at redoing this year's board schedule. When do we want to put that, that one meeting on per month? Space that out, put a projected schedule of meetings together, just work through that, send it to you, and then we could adopt it.
Okay. And the other thing that you should expect, that typically under Board of Education matters and curriculum and instruction is opportunities for schools to let us know what they got going on. Well, Ken will be doubling that up. He'd almost have to double that up, we're still, because I told Tim, I don't want to sacrifice anything. I don't want to not have crossroads talking to us. I don't want to not, right? So in order to get everybody in, we're going to have to have efficient presentations, and we're probably going to have two presentations a month as opposed to one. And so I will be pushing for efficiency, I'll be pushing to keep moving, I might cut conversation at a point when it just kind of goes off. But that's it. Any immediate comments, any immediate thoughts you have on that? Yes?
I just want to make sure that when we, if we implement this, that we do a as good, if not better, job of communicating with the public if we do have a special meeting that we need to vote on something. I think it's very important, if we roll this out, if we move forward with this, the community needs to feel that they're still getting the same information, that we're not doing stuff behind closed doors. I don't ever want to be in that position where the community says, well, their only meeting once, they have to be doing something else. I think technology's allowing us to do this, we need to be diligent about reading our emails, make sure that we're staying up to speed, you know, we're digging into the financial stuff, the curriculum, the HR, and... You know, we're digging into the financial stuff, the curriculum, the HR and the student services. We're diving into those things so that when we, not just for Ken to be prepared, we need to be prepared because we're only gonna get this group once a month if this happens. And so, I just want to make sure that we're ultra sensitive of the sensitivity of the community.
Yes?
A couple of questions. What is the requirement to inform the public if we change our schedule for the year? We've already posted it, correct? I'm looking at you, Angela.
I know you're looking. For the full change, I'm not completely sure. I know when it's a change of a meeting or a new meeting coming up, it's only about 18 hours we have to post that notice. But for the whole change, it has to be-
Just something else. Look at, you know, follow the-
I think that we should shoot, no matter what the requirements are, we should shoot for $48 notice. I mean, I don't think that that's unrealistic and we should always, always, always post it whenever we can.
I want to talk about changing the full schedule to start. Our scheduled meeting dates.
We can do that anytime.
That can be done anytime. Because the biggest concern is the Freedom of Information Act, that there's no, any hint that we're meeting at a time where it's not public. So, hence, we're gonna use every bit of technology to inform the community that we have to have a special meeting next week to talk over X. And so, they know. And then we, and where it is, what time it is, and there's no, it's very clear. And, you know, we would do that now if we had to have a special meeting. So, we would just follow that rule.
With the social media contacts that we all have, I think between everybody on the board sharing a message that hits about everybody, awkward, I would guess, pretty close to it. So, the other question I had was about the financial piece because there are some things that come up quickly. So, I guess that would just be an opportunity for those, for special meetings to come up. You know, something like that. Questions that need to be answered, you know, grant loans and things like that that need to be spent or voted on or something.
And so, you can imagine that if we had to have one of those special meetings, it might be that Sam's the only person that shows up. And every, our cabinet person, every minister here gets to stay home with the family, right? Because he's gonna be dishing something to us that we need to have a decision on by a certain date. So, my thought is, as long as we're running efficiently and doing well, I want to gift people who are doing a great job another day a month. I guess that's kind of my motive is. Any other thoughts?
Real quick, I mean, so, Chad, you might want to give a thumbs up.
Before you get a knee-jerk reaction from the cabinet, I think my comment to that would be, really think about it and see where, really think about where the cons would be. I already know what the pros are for you all. I mean, that's not hard to figure out, but what are the cons? Just let Tim know those and then he can bring them back to us.
Yeah, talk to that in one of your cabinet meetings or something.
Even, you know, as far as curriculum goes, maybe you want to talk to a couple of the building administrators and say, "Hey, what do you think? I mean, is this create a problem for us if we're trying to change some sort of curriculum or from an HR standpoint or whatever the case may be?" We want to know what those problems would be, more so than the benefit of just, because at the end of the day, we still got to do the business of the district.
Yes?
I just, we need to keep effectiveness at the top of the line. Because I don't want to be here till 11 o'clock at night. We were talking about communication earlier. You know, everybody, I guarantee you, start zoning out. I don't think anybody is effective at 9, 10 o'clock at night. So, if our, you know, we're all gonna have to write in personal comments and, you know, and I like hearing the fluff and all of that, but like some of that, all of that would need to get written in because that's-
I agree with you 100%.
You really have to stay on agenda and you really need to, you know, get through presentations. And, you know, you don't all have to tell everybody that presents how impressive you are. And please, don't take that the wrong way. I think, I know how much work that our administrators and our cabinet and our teachers and community members put into those things. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is effective time. If we are only leaving for an hour, that time has to be used effectively. And we have to, you know, and really, US chairman would need to really bring that in. So, I guess you need to, and it sounds like you have been thinking about that and talking to Tim about that, so.
Absolutely. That's a huge thing, right? That's a huge thing. And the fact is, none of us want to be here till 11:00. So, I guarantee you, it would become more effective.
I would hope so. That's my thought.
Because as I stare at, as I stare at you and say, "What do you want to say?" So, you'll get some comments from cabinet. You all continue to think and get back to me. And we'll see if this is worthy of a motion and more discussion. Makes sense?
It will.
All right. With nothing else, right? Hey, it's a great day being a Wildcat, meeting adjourned.